The pledge of allegiance and would be taken. Dr. Antonucci.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we can start with some very good news. As you all know, the school committee did an extensive worldwide search for our new decision, and we feel that we made the very best choice for our school district. So we're pleased to announce that Emily Park is our next superintendent of schools, and we're looking forward and are excited to be working with her.
Thank you, and I am also very excited and honored and just really grateful that I get to keep working with this team and really really gorgeous working with all of you on the school committee to continue the great work of the district and see who's going next, so thank you very much.
Right, awesome. So, thank you Emily. I also want to announce, um, can I announce something before you step in?
John.
Oh, thank you. Well, I want to announce that we are going to have a celebration for Dr. Antonucci, not celebrating that he's leaving, but celebrating the years that he spent with us, and the date of that will be June 8th, and there'll be more information coming forward at the next meeting, but I want you all to hold that day, June 8th, okay?
So, morning news, I, I'm gonna turn to you all and a little birdie told me that you just got accepted into Columbia University, and are you going?
Oh, that's awesome.
Well deserved.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, special program, right?
Yeah, so I'll be spending my first two years in France at a school just outside of Paris.
Wow.
And then after two years, I'll get a bachelor's degree from that school, and then I'll finish up the last two years at Columbia and get a second bachelor's degree.
That's so impressive.
Oh, congratulations.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's great. In your packet, you have your three-quarter quarterly financial report, I don't know if you've done anything to add, but we're in great shape, yeah, I think that's, that's the message. We're on track, wherever we should be, and we're gonna end the year very strong. So that's, that's that. We have kind of like a really cool innovative program that we're just getting in, and I'm gonna turn this over to Abby to talk a little bit about it.
Yep, great.
It's a real exciting adventure.
So I was gonna make slides, but the materials are so pretty, I thought you need just like the actual materials, so let me just briefly tell you what it is. So, an organization founded by a group of people who are very interested in what happens for people with autism after they leave special education, it's called the Autism Higher Education Foundation, and in that name you kind of see the expectation for professional futures for people with autism, and that's very important. So, this group of folks has created something called the Paralegal Assistant Training Program, called the PLAT program, and it's, it's very innovative, and essentially there are ten participating school districts, which we are now one, and a couple of community colleges, as well as importantly for our friends, the Norfolk Probate and Family Court, as well as many other state courts, that are producing opportunities for students with autism ages eighteen and twenty-two to intern for a year or two and gain paralegal assistant training experience. So our job is to transport the student, support the kind of work habits and hygiene and all the communication skills, and then the court hosts the students in the family court, the probate division, in the records area, and the students gain all these job skills, and then what's important is that twenty-two, it links to a promise of part-time paid employment in a related law firm, or other banking or accounting firm, and that's, that's the critical link. So we have our first student participating, we'll keep you posted on how it goes, but this is kind of what we're hoping to have more of, are these kind of innovative three-triangular partnerships that really launch kids successfully, in fact, adults. Do you have any questions, or any?
What should I start off?
So eighteen is really the earliest that they'll take a student, and there are certain parameters, but it's very important to note that the student has a typical civilian, you know courthouse worker, partner person supervising them, and that's the court's use of their resources because they believe in the program. So the chief justice has endorsed it, and it's a very important kind of future next step for young adults, so we're thrilled to be part of it.
Why is the program in existence?
So it's in its second full year, and there are about twenty students in Massachusetts across the whole court system, but they actually hope to go national, which when we met with them, is like the, the idea, that there, there's an infrastructure, courthouses are often near public transportation, they're everywhere, and so the reality is this might be a network that could really support many, many young adults.
There are no graduates yet who've taken on these jobs?
There are people who are in the employment phase this year, yep, a few. So they're listed for you here in the materials, and they include Burke Line, Danvers, Lynnfield, as well as some of the, the private schools for young adults with autism, so when you see something crossroad school, that's a private school for students with autism.
And this is our first year participating?
Yep.
That's great.
So there are, what accounting firms, but any accounting firms committed?
So I don't know the names of all the accounting firms, but I could find out for you, I think the law firms were their first place, as well as local banks, they're trying to kind of do something with local banks at this point.
I get the sense that there were smaller, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys are there, I get the sense that there were smaller firms, not like, not the national accounting firms and...
And I think that kids do better in smaller environments too, so there's that personalization of it.
How are they, how are they soliciting banks, or accounting firms, or law firms?
So the people on the board of this autism higher education group have an outreach system, but they're always looking for other connections, so if you know anybody, you'll use an email. Because we, we love networking, yeah.
Thanks Emily. Say also under the umbrella of innovation, Steve is gonna talk to you a little bit about a kind of exciting new special we're trying to get rolling down at the elementary level.
Great, thank you, if you'll bear with me, doing a couple quotes. John Thune, U.S. Center, South Dakota, "Whether our children want to become farmers, doctors, teachers, or entrepreneurs, it'll be easier for them to achieve dreams in the digital age if they become, if they have some background in computer science. We need our children to learn twenty-first century skills for a twenty-first century world. Encoding teaches them the creativity and problem-solving skills that are necessary for success." Jack Dorsey, creator of Twitter, founder and CEO of Square, "I think that programming is not all that dissimilar to great art. Once you start thinking in concepts of programming, it makes you a better person, as does learning a foreign language, as does learning math, as does learning how to read." Then last but not least, Snoop Dogg, rapper, singer-songwriter, and actor. "Support the American dream, and," the letter N, "make coding available to everyone." So, I tend to agree wholeheartedly with their sentiments. I think coding develops a mindset and skills such as creativity, persistence, cooperation, critical thinking skills, all those things. So we've had pockets of coding at elementary, we have coding in the middle schools, you know, we also have computer science and engineering in the high schools, so we very much want to provide all elementary students with an opportunity to experience coding as well. Again, we've had pockets of it, our instructional technology coaches, ITCs, have been delivering that coding experience here and there at the elementary schools, and they are uniquely qualified to deliver this, and they will be the ones that will be delivering coding.
What, what do you mean by coding?
Yeah, so I'll get into that, it's, it's, it's not computer science necessarily, it's not sitting behind a screen, you know, trying to program something, it's a lot more. What we're, you know, one of the backdrops that we're really thinking about for coding is actually to, to think about using robotics, because it is so hands-on. We have a lot of robotics kits already in the schools, in fact, Charlie, you've been instrumental in getting a couple kits that we put into service. So, we have this vision of students learning coding ideas, but doing it in a really hands-on exploratory way. We just, we don't want them to have this vision of being behind a screen, just kind of writing code and trying to make something happen. So that's really kind of the focus, if that makes sense. As far as kind of making it work, it's really hard to introduce anything with the elementary school with so much going on already, so we've identified basically a special in grade three, so it's gonna be a little bit of shifting going on with the specials, but what the plan is, is to basically offer it where every student in all the elementary schools gets one lesson every week for the duration of next school year. So that's, that's really how we're hoping to get what we will accomplish, and again, we have a little bit of work to do, I've been talking to Emily a lot about this, in terms of kind of how we want this to look, but also how we can make it work. And of course, as we think about the curriculum, I really can't report too much on that, we really just started this, in fact, the ITC's met today to try to come up with at least the, the beginning of what that curriculum looks like.
Those are instructional technology coaches, or teachers, or instructional technology coaches.
So, we're, we're trying to work on that, I can tell you for sure that I'll be meeting with the computer science teacher and the engineering teacher at the Dursen Middle School, just to try to apply these skills, and think about what those expectations will be as we move towards, towards the middle school. There are national standards, there are state standards that we'll be looking at, but again, to your point, or your question, it really needs to be a very hands-on exploratory experience, and we're really excited about it, and, you know, like, can't wait to see how it looks, but we're definitely here to announce that it's gonna happen.
Is it gonna happen in the fall, this year?
Yeah, next year. Yes. So once a week for the, for the duration of the year. You know, it, it's tough where it only happens in grade three, but we're also looking at the possibility of introducing some kind of coding, maker space type environments in the library media center, where kids in the other grades can have some experience with that, hopefully have a little bit of continuity as they move towards middle school. Again, you know, a lot of details on that, and that's something that we're working on as well.
And I'm just gonna jump in and say that it is basically cost neutral, so we're doing this with current staffing, and the, the, the time has, we're, we're making the time in grade three for a special by moving one of the doubles, so we have, we currently have four specials, art, music, PE, and library, and kids have five specials a week, so they double up on one of those, and we have, with the change in the kindergarten schedule, room for an additional special for kindergarten, so we're moving one of those doubles to K, and that frees up a spot to have five different specials, five days a week in grade three.
So that's pretty much it, let's hear some questions to make.
That might not be the case. Terrific what you're doing, like partly, when I came on the committee three years ago, I heard about one of the PTOs, Martha Jones, who donated Lego, so I was curious and went over, and it was fascinating, the high school robotics kids were teaching the second graders, those are the kids with, so one person is doing the computer, the other's making the robot, so then I had the next year, and so I go over, and I was shocked by two things, one is, it wasn't the high school kids anymore, it's the fifth graders, teaching the second graders, the other shock was, the fifth grader was my granddaughter, she was teaching the second grader, Toni's daughter. So, now, what's, what's, every school didn't have a PTO paper, so what you're actually doing is all these kids are gonna get exposure to this, which I think is very, very valuable, and suddenly, you know, science and computers, you know, because in their brains, if they wanna get into this, they wanna learn this, it's, it's really an exciting way to motivate kids into math, wanting to, yeah, the math helps you, so I think it's terrific what you're doing, and, and all of our kids now hopefully will arrive in middle school with the same common expertise, there's just a few of them maybe had because of the PTO, but thanks for doing this, I think it's a terrific idea.
I still don't understand what you were referring to, I understand robotics, I understand computer science, what are you talking about coding, you're gonna teach these kids coding, what are you actually referring to?
Coding is synonymous with computer science, you know, it's the same idea, you're programming something to accomplish some kind of an outcome, so it's, it's...
Programming, just not job.
It's really, yeah, it comes in a lot of different ways.
But is it separate from robotics, or part of it?
We're, we're considering having robotics be the backdrop of it, you could code a robot, and you can try to have it accomplish tasks, whatever it may be.
So, can you say, like, even, even the high school robotics teams, by the way, just went as far as they've ever gone in their, in their careers, we should talk about that sometime, but there are really two components to robotics, one is like building the robot, and it's sort of like the, the fix-it stuff, and the, and then the other part is the computer science part, which is programming, encoding it to make it do stuff you want it to do, and that's what the Lego kids do, it's the same thing, just at a junior level.
So they're learning about loops, if they have statements?
So is it a euphemism for programming?
Programming, yeah.
Oh, sure, sure. So I actually used to coach Lego robotics for my own children, and what's really interesting about it is it just fosters this critical thinking, problem solving, so they're learning coding and computer science, but then immediately putting it into practice by trying to get the robot to actually do what it is that they're trying to accomplish, it's all this iteration, trial and error, a lot of, just a lot of those skills that I think serve kids well, and in lots of other areas, whatever it may be, so.
How'd you determine, can you say this, I must have, how'd you determine there's really a lot of speed?
Well, it was somewhat logistical, as is, as we said. It is so difficult.
With the schedu, so with the scheduling?
It was, it was driven by schedule, and, you know, and we're, we're gonna have to take notes and see how next year goes, and, and see if it's something that potentially could expand, or, you know, who knows, we're, we're gonna have to see how it goes.
What would you have to do to extend it, do you have to change the schedule?
Well, so, I mean, when we first started thinking about it, I mean particularly because we're thinking of this as sort of, let's make sure everybody has a common foundational experience as they go to the computer science, the middle school, it probably would make most sense to make it a grade five, right, bridging to the middle school, but the way that the specials are designed right now, performing arts, you know, kids are in the end in grade five, and so, grade three was just the place where it made sense to free up some space without having to make radical changes to other programs that are working and, you know, effective.
Okay, public participation. Is there any? None? Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. So Abby will go on to the first reading of the nalt, nalt song?
Naloxone. No, naloxone. So I'm gonna do this part sitting down, and then I'll be up for the second part. So you have in front of you the policy that you empowered us to write last month.
Right.
This is the first reading of the policy, so it will now theoretically be three review, you know, three months of review. So I just wanted to give a quick overview about a couple major components, so the policy has four sections, training, administration of the drug, storage of the drug, and then record keeping, and I thought I'd just take one minute to hit some of the highlights for you and ask for any feedback and questions. So in the terms training, what we're talking about again, just very briefly, is that the school nurses, all the school nurses, would, in consultation with the school physician, be trained and would be allowed to administer nasal naloxone, which is an opiate antagonist, as we discussed last month, for the, I guess, intervention in the eventual life-threatening situation. In addition, the school's athletic trainer here at the high school would also be trained and empowered to do that in the nurse's absence. So that's the first thing, just that we're saying those two classes of employees, we would train.
What if they're not available?
So, everything about this is built, that we are not the first responders, so I want to draw your attention to that next, we're really tertiary, and I couldn't even figure out what word comes after tertiary, like, four, five, six, seven, right, we're not first or second, we're really here in the, in the intervening period of time while the first responders are arriving. So to that end, if you look at the procedure, okay, I just want to draw your attention to the, literally, item E, the requirement to call local emergency services prior, which I underscored, to the administration of it, right, this is literally about nine-one-one is coming, and if it's possible for us to help someone, we would, we would be able to do that, but it changes nothing, nine-one-one is coming, and that's critically important. As you see in the second part, administration, the first of the four action items is call nine-one-one. So Westwood is not putting itself in a position any different than it does today when we call nine-one-one.
Okay.
Okay, we hashed that one out across the table here, and we are clear on that. The third section on speech two is storage, so if you're curious where this stuff would be kept during an event, say graduation or a dance, the school nurse currently here in Florida goes to school dances with a little bag, a little backpack, and in it she might have someone's inhaler that she knows about, or perhaps an epi pen, right, she actually does that, if you went to the semi-formal, I stood next to her and she had her little go-bag with her.
So the school nurse is at every?
I don't believe she's at every event, but she does come to many, and she is present at things like the semi-formal and other events.
Okay.
So what I would tell you is we're not trying to become first responders, we're, we're here for things anyway.
Okay.
And also during the school day, if you think about what happens, frequently the school nurse is not even here, right, she's at a meeting or something. So what I would, I would just say is in the event that she is available and she has her bag, it would be in the bag, and when it's not there, it would be locked in the nurse's locked office, locked cabinet. Want to add something?
No.
Okay. The athletic trainer similarly has his golf cart, which you've probably seen driving around the high school complex, and he also has a medical bag, and this would be stored not on his person, but in the medical bag, with him out and about, and then in his locked cabinet in his locked office, but he's not. So that is the plan, and in terms of record keeping, I think we discussed this, DPA would ask for a list of whoever was trained, so we would keep that in my office, we'd produce it if asked. I included in here that the director of student services would be notified of any use of this medication, so we could notify you if you wanted to be apprised of that, as well as that we would follow our normal procedures, which include things like how you dispose of medications and things like that, which we already have on the books. So it's pretty straightforward, do you have questions about it, feedback?
It's a small type of question, does the nurse have to call nine-one-one, or can somebody else call nine-one-one?
Anybody can call nine-one-one.
The, have we had any need, have we had kids at the school yet who have had the opiate overdose?
Not that I'm aware of.
And what, what about the experience and message in the schools, is this common in schools, certain types of schools, is it more?
I couldn't comment on that, I can tell you in my next presentation, what we did, a survey of thirteen surrounding communities for the screening, kind of what those communities reported, but I don't know about their kind of medical response information.
So is it, let's say we take, city of Boston, we take suburban schools, is this, does this ever happen, does it happen often?
I don't know.
We don't, yeah. Now, I mean, this, by the way, just, just to refresh you from last month, having this on site is as much about the fact that we're just a public...
Place.
Place, and so, football games, you know, fifteen hundred people come to the football games, and it's just a busy, so, it's, it's, it's partly about the students, but it's really also about the fact that we're just a public institution.
So do you think it becomes common almost like the defibrillator?
Well, what I was gonna say, and this is why my wheels are turning, was Narcan is, it's actually sold over the counter at CVS.
Yeah, it's, it's...
So it's kind of funny that we're, we're...
We are.
Yeah, it's, it's like an over-the-counter medication.
We would not do that, by the way, we would use the school physician and even have the order.
No, no, yeah. We're not gonna go buy it like that.
Yeah, it is moving to hospitals, to EMTs, to policemen, to school, I mean, that's the shift, and we're just really tracking along with that. So the Royal Public Hospital, if you have any, any questions, I'm happy to respond.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
I was just gonna say, just to add one more thing, I think sometimes we do policies partly in the cardified procedures, really partly to protect ourselves, right, I mean, so the Good Samaritan laws protect us, but sometimes we need to give ourselves permission, really, to help others, right, and is that safe to say?
Yes, and so that's an important distinction here, normally what I would say, and Emily and I went over this around and around, our nurses know what to do to take care of our students and our staff, right, that's part of their context, this is really just a little bit of an extension that if somebody, a school committee had, you know, an episode of some type, we could help them, and these, these staff people would feel that we had been thoughtful about their safety. Do you know what I'm saying, as professionals, so, but think about how many people you have in front of you, why did you call?
What did you just say?
Do you know what I'm saying? If any of us... Forgive me.
It's okay. What I get is gone, and then...
It's about the pronouns, right?
Yeah, very good. We're just lighting it up.
Just a related question, sorry to bring it up, are all of our coaches required to know CPR?
Yes.
And not just the trainer, but the coaches at the mall?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Policy, is it?
It's a requirement of...
Requirement of coding.
Of employment, yes.
The high school nurse gives a CPR trainer, the high school nurse gives a trainer. Oh, good.
Do you want to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. Go to the follow-up and discussion of State Substance Abuse Screening Initiative.
Excellent, okay. So, very briefly, last one, and it, it was a short interval, we got a lot accomplished in the three weeks since we've seen you last, and what I would just say is that I really appreciated the, the way it worked out, that you guys said like, go ahead, spend some time on it and come back, that was a good opportunity for us to have time to really do some thoughtful discussion. So, this is in follow-up to last month, where we were talking about EXPERT, which as you recall is the initiative from the Department of Public Health for substance abuse screening, brief intervention, referral to treatment, EXPERT. And as we discussed a little bit more in detail last month, the Department of Public Health has linked up with the Department of Education, and they have asked us to step our toe into the public health waters and engage in screening of substance abuse behaviors with students, and we talked about pros, cons, and all of that, and I put up that bullet, upon appropriation, the linkage back to the national laws, the first two words are upon appropriation, and we discussed last month, there has been no appropriation, so when you hear in the committee, there's this new law, there is new law, there is no money behind that new law. And we ended our conversation last month with these two possible paths, if you want us to go ahead and look, either move forward for next year, or engage in a year of study of the topic. So, we've done some discussions, so I just want to bring you up to speed. So, since I talked to you last, we've had calls with a bunch of people, and I just wanted to give you some of that context. So this town in Natick has, they're the most advanced, they're like four or five years into this, they were the first pilot of the first year of the first grant, so I spent some time on the thing with Karen Ruffo, who's the nurse leader in Natick High School, and she walked me through their experience, so we gained some insight from her. They do two grade levels, seven and nine, which is quite interesting. Then we talked to the DA's coordinator, which over at the district attorney's office is a woman named Denise Carbone, and she's the coordinator of the Norfolk School Partnership, which is the organization that did the grant that these early doctor towns have heard. And she gave me some good advice, and her perspective is that it is not mandatory, they are suggesting this, and we would be within our rights to engage in a year of study, she's, you know, she's not pushing us and saying there will be a bad consequence if we're not doing it subsequently, so that's important to know. And then I spoke to her supervisor, Jennifer Rowe, who's an ADA over in the Crime Prevention Unit at the DA's office, which is about a five weeks ago, we're finding somebody to talk to about this, and her perspective is that they're just really trying to lower the mortality rates for young adults, and she'd like us to help, very nice lady. So from that context, I also called the DOE, and I just spoke to the woman that was in charge of this, and I said, has there been any money appropriated that I don't know about? She confirmed there hasn't been, and she said, we're just suggesting that districts look at this. So we shared the same materials you all got last month with staff at Westwood High School, guidance, psychology, the school social worker, we had a meeting, Lynn and I kind of coordinated a conversation amongst all those people, and then Lynn surveyed thirteen surrounding towns, and then I also spoke with all the special ed student services directors at our tech job, and that's, that's good. So the outcomes were of the thirteen communities, we have a comprehensive list for you, but they included Medfield, Weston, Dover Sherburne, Akimbox, for all... but they included Medfield, Weston, Dover Sherburne, Akimbox, Earl and Wayland. All those thirteen, seven are doing it now. They must have taken the grant money, so they're in for next year as well. And most of them chose either ninth or tenth. What's noticeable here is the five and three, it doesn't really add up to like two grade levels for seven schools. And that's because many towns started with one grade level, which I learned that's like an entry plan you could do. So I wanted to say that's kind of interesting. Ninth appeared to be a very popular year, probably because of the school figures, let's get to know the kids. Three of them are in some kind of implementation process. And they, all three do plan to do it next year and survey tenth graders. So again, that's just good data. And three are just like us, they're holding off, they're in a year of study, they don't quite know what they want to do. So I have other details from that, but I think in general you could feel comfortable not going ahead or going ahead because there are people doing both in like communities. And then here's what we were asking you and recommending to. We would like the high school staff unanimously, and it gave me permission to say that with strength request, that you endorse the year of study approach. And there are many good reasons for that and I just want to say them out loud too. Because if you want, you go back to them, I'm happy to do that. They would like to go visit some of these towns. They also would like us to monitor the state's commitment to this and see if it's still as strong in six, nine months. They like to hold parent and community education sessions and really educate people like we're doing here to say, this is what this would look like for your student. We think we may have to put into that budget perhaps like a study pen for somebody to coordinate the thing. So we want to do that next year thoughtfully with your input. We're going to need to actually train the people and we need time to do that. And then I would like personally to just say, I think it's nice to formally decide if we're going to do this with community input about grade levels, et cetera. And I think we should take our time and be thoughtful next year about that. And none of those things preclude us from helping individual kids next year, right? So there's generally no negative. So that is the request and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about any of it.
Of the schools that you talked to, the base question is, what have they got out of it? What have they learned, you know, from the process? Who have they helped? Have they helped people as they ordinarily would not have helped? And what negative feedback have they gotten from people who either understood or didn't understand what the purpose of this was? And what's the feedback from the Public Health Department who asked us in the first place? Are they pleased with what they're learning? Are they not getting what they wanted? I mean, those are best questions I would have, but I don't get a chance to.
Well, there are a lot of questions and I don't have all the answers to those. I think, I don't know what DPH gets out of it and it'll probably take a couple of years for them to generate a report. But what I would say is talking directly to the person at Natick. You know, certainly there are individual students they identified and supported. But if we remember last month too, they found soft concerns, right? Maybe nothing that rose to this extreme level, but kids who were depressed, kids who were experimenting with drugs and alcohol, things like that. And that she did say to me that they felt that that alone was very helpful. Beyond that, I really don't know. I mean, I think this would be, we'd have to decide we're doing this for ourselves, right? This is important for our community or that it's intrusive and we're not doing it. There's either way to look at it. Frankly, it's going to be a lot of work. The more guidance and psych and folks at high school talk about it, we're, you know, committed to do it, but it needs to be planned and thought out and done thoughtfully.
Thank you for doing it in such a timely manner.
Do you feel confident you can give me direction tonight or do you want to take it under advisement? I don't want to pressure you.
I would propose that we ask you to study it to build on that. An important part of that would be maybe at least probably about what it all is, what we're trying to do in a parents' meeting to receive feedback. The second thing I would think would be the high school kids, you know, whether it's the school or whatever, to ask for their inputs. And I would, there's a lot of issues ahead. How about a good ones of confidentiality? I mean, are kids really willing to open up, you know? I mean, we sit down and talk to them, we would, who's going to, if they have a problem? So I think you should definitely be studying it, helping us to learn more, get input from the community. The high school kids would be valuable and to, and every couple of months come back to us.
I think the parents, we need to make sure.
Spend some time on it over the summer, we get it organized, come to you in September with a plan. Give us some feedback about if it felt like a theory that made sense. And it may come that by talking to parents and community members, you know, forty percent of people are going to opt their kid out. Maybe we decide to not do it, right? But let's go through the process. I think this is a very positive, well-intentioned, good thing that is attempting to be done. And the question is just how to do it well, right? So it sounds like your study is the response. I will take that back to the guidance folks at the high school and so they can plan their time.
Can I just make one point, not a question, just an addition is, so the year of study is a great move, especially, especially as it relates to the funding and I think, yeah, I need to use the right word, the state's commitment to the initiative. It could be that we wait them out and they do fund it. And the reality might be a year from now, we have to do it. So I just wanted to be clear, like we might have to do this in chance or maybe a probability, I don't know. But I think waiting and seeing is the right move for sure.
Let's suppose you had asked the school committee, not to use up time now, questions that we didn't have. You could ask these other programs as a getting experience, but we may not have answers, but if they're finding things, it could be valuable. But what are our questions that you could be asking as you're doing that? But thank you for the work you've done.
Yep, you had it and I will communicate that to my school.
Not really a question to you, but for the committee here. So we had these presentations about the dangers of drug abuse, right? And our town has a ballot question coming up, which if we vote yes, we prohibit the sale of marijuana in Westwood, non-medical sale. Why wouldn't the committee consider endorsing that and making a statement and saying, yes, we should prohibit drug use in our town? If we are worried about all these ramifications of opioids, how can we sit silently and not endorse what's on the ballot in our own town?
Because it's a ballot question and I think that the constituents in town will vote on it. It's a referendum question, but it's not a school issue.
Well, it affects our children. Why as a school committee, don't we have the backbone to say, yeah, you shouldn't use drugs? That's why we have these programs. We have to study them because drugs cause problems and they cause special problems for our students. So I think we should in fact vote as a committee to support that ballot question that the selectmen have put on the ballot to prohibit marijuana facilities from coming to town and selling drugs in our town. What's the downside to that?
I think we're going down slippery slopes if we do that, okay? I think that this is a school committee, we're elected to, you know, legislate policy, okay? But we're not elected to offer opinions on ballot questions. They're giving them a referendum question, the town will go and vote on that. They'll vote it up and down. But I don't think it's our job to offer an opinion as a committee. I think we can offer, you know, privately. I don't think any of us are condoning the use of drugs.
Well, as elected members of the school committee, I think we should in fact tell the townspeople what we think about this particular ballot question. It's not good for our students to be inundated with drugs and we should do what we can to stop it. So I'd make a motion, ask for a second to in fact support that ballot question. That's the selectmen have put on the, the second, on the town's vote.
Is there more discussion?
Well, I think that the issue we run into is much like what just said. I think as individuals, we all have our opinions and I would agree with your opinion. And I'll put it out there publicly. But I know that earlier we had a school committee meeting a couple of months ago.
October.
In October, it's already gone, been that long. And although it was on a different issue, that was our reason. As a school committee, we said we did not want to vote, we didn't want to hold ourselves out as providing an opinion to, as a committee to the town, basically telling the town that this is our opinion, this is the way it should be. As a committee, we were stepping outside of our responsibility. Doesn't mean that individually we can't.
Well, that was a statewide referendum. This is townwide. The townspeople might be interested to know what their elected school committee members think about whether or not we think the sale of marijuana to our youth is a good idea. I don't. I think as elected officials, we have some responsibility to lead and not be afraid to say no and not just be preoccupied with treatment, which is a great thing, which is a good idea and we should do that. But that's the back end of the problem. The people who are elected on the school committee should not be afraid to tell its students or eighteen and older and the rest of town that we think it's a bad idea to be selling marijuana in this town. So.
I think we'll all agree.
I think it's very appropriate for us to speak of only on issues that affect the kids in Westwood, you know? And I believe very strongly, according to the thing we got, one of the four kids in Massachusetts is smoking marijuana. I have had people I've known whose lives were destroyed because they were having fun sports. I very, very strongly about the recreational. And so I mean, I basically feel that if we're basically going to encourage people to come in to sell marijuana in Westwood, is that going to affect our kids in a way? And I think it's not a healthy thing for our kids. And so I'm speaking out more for the kids who I believe as a school committee, we should show some concern for them, that this isn't going to be good if they do it. And I think it could, how many are going to be picking up marijuana because it's just, you know, they can't get a beer, but they can go get marijuana. I think it could really hurt a lot of kids. And if it's going to hurt kids, I think that's something a school committee should speak up about and offer our opinion. Not that anybody cares, but I think it's not.
As an individual, then we can speak, but I mean, as a school committee, how is that, how is that within our domain? To be, you know, offering an opinion on a referendum question?
It's an issue of policy on a referendum, but you know, do you really think it's a valuable thing to have? Selling, people selling marijuana?
Of course I don't, of course I don't.
Speak out and just say, you know?
Well, I can say that personally, I think that it's, we should vote. I don't think the school committee needs to vote on it. Tony, would you like to talk?
We've got a second, we're going to vote.
Well, we're going to have a discussion first.
So I do have a lot to say on the philosophy, which back in October, I was, I wanted to vote on the school charter question. And this committee said we should, we're not going to take it here, which is fine. I'm fine with that. And so hypocrisy, I will not accept from this committee.
Oh, I was ready to vote against that. I was all in favor of voting and voting against it, but we didn't have the vote. So there's no hypocrisy here, Tony. I was ready to vote against that and I'm ready to vote for this. So don't pretend there's hypocrisy in this vote. So you might, you didn't have a majority, but we got two votes to vote this one. And if you don't, if you don't want to vote against it, vote against it.
So that's my, my view isn't about the question itself. It's about consistency in the school committee having consistent and adequate opinion viewpoints. If we're going to be consistent, we should be consistent. That's my view.
It's a precarious position because I, as an individual, would agree with you that it would be bad for our kids. I just struggle with us as a school committee taking that on. I think we as individuals already, just now, by what we've done, have indicated what our views are, some of us have. I think all of us have. Okay, so I think that.
As elected officials, I think the townspeople should have expectation to hear what we think of the committee. And my motion is to vote yes on this proposed ballot question, which would prohibit non-medical marijuana establishments from coming to Westwood. And I think the reasons I suggested, Charlie suggested, we think it's a bad thing for our students and it's a bad thing for our town.
So what is the motion, I guess, and what is the actual motion?
To vote yes on the ballot question to prohibit.
The school committee?
Supports voting yes.
We support voting yes on the ballot question of April twenty fifth. I don't know the number of the ballot question, but it prohibits all types of marijuana establishments from coming to Westwood, they're non-medical in nature.
So we have a second, so it's a call for the vote. Okay, all those in favor? All those wait, more discussion?
No, 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 that's okay. Okay, in favor would be voting as a school committee, we're supporting.
You're recommending vote yes on this ballot?
It's only. Your point, I don't want to belabor what I'm going to. Your point is you think that if we as a committee, we're standing up there telling the people of the town, this is how you should vote.
Well, listen, we have elected to this position and in part PR is important. And in the war on drugs, it's important for children to know that parents are against it and that they're not afraid to speak up and that they're not wringing their hands about whether we can be against marijuana. We are against it. Because the more people smoke it, the more problems it costs. I don't think we're telling anybody how to vote.
What are we doing?
People who are going to vote might want to find out what the different religious people think and we're just an opinion. We're not telling them how to vote. We just have an opinion that we're offering to them that they might want to consider when they vote.
But are we offering our opinions now?
We are offering our opinion on this issue.
Isn't our opinion now on camera and haven't we told the public what our opinions are?
It's not a majority of the school committee and our vote is a school committee. It's just a disagreement in the school committee.
No, it's not.
So why would you say yes, we should vote yes?
Well, can I clarify a position that I have, all right? I disagree with Charlie. Charlie is saying that the majority of the school committee is not in favor of this. I don't think that's what I heard tonight, all right? That's not what I heard tonight.
Well, the vote, I'm talking about the vote, you know?
What vote?
But Ryan has just proposed as a motion and in the second, you're far and against it.
No, here's another thing, I sat here, I can replay the tape, guys. I can repeat the minutes. You said we should not take a view. I remember Charlie, we should not take a view on these public views. So to me, it's about hypocrisy, it's not about the question.
Hypocrisy, what are you talking about? This is a townwide ballot question. I was well prepared to vote against.
On the tape.
Okay, you know what, let's take a vote. All those in favor of supporting?
Recommending a yes vote on the ballot question.
I'm going to abstain.
I'm going to abstain too. I don't think it's, I think it's putting us in.
Okay, so three F's, stanchions and two yeses.
So the vote carries.
On to the next item. We're going to talk about projected kindergarten enrollment by sizes.
So I'm going to, come on, I'm just going to man this, man the slides from my seat and Emily and I are going to kind of tag team the issues here. So you have, so this is all about kindergarten enrollment for September, for next year, projected kindergarten enrollment, based on the best information we have today, okay? Literally as of today. Emily wrote a, I think a fairly comprehensive memo to you in your packet, but what we're going to do is we're going to just kind of walk, kind of in order of that memo, walk through the issues that we need you to consider, okay? Starting with, I lost my notes here, starting with kind of the easiest ones, the Downey School. So today we have a projected enrollment of thirty six kindergarteners. And we had budgeted for two classes and the numbers just work, right? So theoretically, two classes of eighteen, we'd have it done. You couldn't do thirty six, obviously, right? So eighteen and eighteen works just fine.
Can I just clarify what we mean by projected? So at this point, our projections are based on looking at all the kids who are eligible for kindergarten, looking at actual registrations and then the principals have contacted anybody who is eligible, who is not registered to say, are we correct? You do not intend to register at this point. And so these numbers are, you know, as real as they can be without being able to look in the future and see who might recruit them.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, that's good. So that's Downey. I'm going to jump to the other side of the chart and look at Martha Jones. Martha Jones, that projected enrollment is fifty. It gets a little more challenging. I'd say we would never by design recommend that we have class sizes of twenty five. Again, by design, all right? And so we would recommend that we split that into three classes and that would be seventeen, seventeen, sixteen. We actually, if you recall the budget conversations, we do have an unallocated position in Martha Jones for this very reason, which we kind of suspected that we might need to have three incoming Ks instead of two. So that seems to be pretty clear to us, that fifty number. Okay, any questions on that? Moving, sorry to jump, moving. Moving, sorry to jump, moving back over to Sheehan here. Again, projected, but we have thirty-nine students. Much like Downey, those numbers just work pretty easily, and so right now, we're projecting two classes of twenty and nineteen.
That, and that was unanticipated, so that number is actually quite a bit lower than we had thought, and so we had budgeted for three kindergarten sections at Sheehan. It appears we only need two.
Correct.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's a new, that's sort of, yeah, new unallocated, that's sort of, for this purpose, currently, we have some one additional unallocated position, if that holds true. So here's, here's where it starts getting complicated. And this, Deerfield and Hamlin are going to be part of the same conversation, bear with me just a moment. So Hamlin, we're looking at forty-six right now, projected. Our guidelines, just to refresh everybody, in K to two, our guidelines have been historically eighteen to a max of twenty-two. This, you know, we have, we've had classes over guidelines many times over the years, but twenty-three and twenty-three is certainly cause for some concern. I think Tony brought this up, brought this up last meeting. The tricky part with this number is, you know, twenty-three and twenty-three might feel high to some people. I'd also say I'm equally uncomfortable, by design, creating class sizes of fifteen, fifteen and sixty, right? And so, just like I didn't want to create twenty-fives, I don't really want to go on the opposite end, but that's, that's something we need to consider, you know, you need to consider, we need to consider as, as a committee. So here's where it gets tricky, I'm going to move off Hamlin for a moment and go to Deerfield. Deerfield's really challenging. So we have a total, if I can, I do that now from my head right now, we have this really unique situation, we have seventeen kindergarteners, we have twenty-five first graders, okay? For the last, how many years, Josh, two or three years?
This is our second year with the K-one class.
Second year, we, the way the numbers have shaken out at Deerfield, we've actually had one kindergarten, one K-one in one grade one. With the numbers, the way they are projected for next year, it just doesn't work out. We just don't have enough kindergarteners to do a K, a K-one and a one, okay? So this number feels a little high to do by design. This number is okay. What we are putting on the table, anything else on that, but I'll talk about the proposal with...
So I would just clarify that to do, so to do a K-one, you really need to have at least, what, seven kindergarteners, maybe eight first graders? You, you need that to make the K-one, you know, an effective model. And so you can see the number at Deerfield, seventeen incoming kindergarteners, it's too small to create a K-one. If you spun seven kindergarteners into the K-one, you'd have a kindergarten of ten, which really would not work, would be viable. So that's sort of the, the tension we have here.
So one of the ideas, and I have to give credit to Josh, Josh here, unless you don't want the credit, tell me, and that'll be my... Depends how, depends on what you're thinking. Yeah, I'll give it to you. One idea is, is to offer a handful of Hamlin families the opportunity to enroll their kindergarteners in the K-one class at Deerfield, okay? And you could shift, you know, what would be reasonable is to shift about six kids over, which, so in that case, that would drop Hamlin to twenty-twenty, and it would give just almost enough, you know, really to do a, to be a viable K-one. You could do up to eight, which would lower these, again, theories, all theoretically, down to nineteen and nineteen, and then again, it would, it would have, moving eight over would make for, again, a very viable, you know, robust K-one. K-one, and I'll say this, and maybe Josh wants to speak to it or not, but it's hugely popular in our experience. And so what we're theoretically doing is incentivizing, creating, creating an incentive for, for families at Hamlin to go to a, have a unique K-one experience. The details are often worked out about how to make that happen. I'd also say, if families, if we decide to go on this path, I think we would have to commit to, commit to allowing those students to stay in Deerfield for their elementary career, should they choose to do so, and also commit to siblings.
So do we provide transportation?
No, we would not provide transportation. That would be, that would be, that would be cost prohibitive.
And, and I know there are, you know, no MCAS tests or anything, have, have you looked at, how do kids, is there any way of testing or, or finding out how a K-one situation benefits the kids? Do they do well at the level?
They, they did very well. I mean, we have a two, two-year sample size, and looking at our current second graders who were first graders the first year that we had the, the K-one, and our current first graders, who, some of whom were in the K-one as kindergarteners. And it's not always the sort of, you know, a must to have all the kindergarteners transition up to first grade in the K-one, but it is one of the benefits of having the, the multi-age classroom, to have those kindergarteners as peer leaders and having gone, you know, a lot of familiarity with the, the program. And I've got lots of numbers to support the fact that they, that those students have done really well, not only in terms of how they enter the, the grade level, but also the amount of growth they make over the, the course of the year.
And parents are happy with growth?
They are, yeah, certainly. Two springs ago, when we started, there was a lot of anxiety. It was a new, new model, it was one that we, you know, sort of decided on fairly late in the year, and understandably so, there was a lot of anxiety on, on my part as well. And we've had, you know, many parents who have sort of come to me after initially being nervous about it and just saying, you know, this was a really wonderful experience for my child, and, and we even, it's, it's interesting, we have in our, our enrolled, seventeen enrolled incoming kindergarteners, some siblings of students who have gone through the K-one and their parents have, you know, said, hey, if there's any way my, you know, younger child could be in this, it would be, you know, we really, you know, welcome that opportunity.
Don't go back several years, haven't we done this? We did this at the Downing.
It was way ago, like eight, nine years ago.
And it was very successful there.
Right, so I was, we had that model for many years until enrollment didn't allow, didn't allow for. So, yeah, I mean, these are not ideal solutions.
So if you were to do this, how, and maybe Josh, how, how did you let parents know, parents who are incoming? In a way, you're going to have to sell it. How will you inform parents about the benefits of a K-one classroom for the first time?
So Josh and I talked about this a little bit, I mean, we obviously would have to sort of put the opportunity out to Hamlin parents, we would have an, an information evening where people who thought they were interested could come learn more about the K-one model. And then I think what we would do is, you know, in, in order, in order for it to be viable, like, we would have to have at least four Ks who were interested, and we could really only accommodate eight. And so I think what we would do is put out a deadline and say, this is the deadline to tell us that you're interested. And if it were only four, we would say, okay, fine. If for some reason it were more than eight, we would tell people in advance that it's greater than eight, and we would just lottery for the slots.
And in addition to that, we would also, you know, be happy to offer a information session to any interested Hamlin families. We did that two springs ago with our first graders, or our next year's first graders at the time at Deerfield, and have now just sort of folded, you know, the explanation, the sort of day in the life of a, a K-one classroom into our kindergarten information night for incoming kindergarten parents. So we'd be happy to offer that for, for any interested family.
So that evening actually already happened back in January, I think, right? There's some, so there are parents who came to the kindergarten information night, I think.
The, the one that happens later on this, in the spring.
Later on, later on, I'm getting my dates confused, yes, okay, so this is coming up.
Coming up, yeah.
Coming, okay.
And if I can just try and, from a student services perspective, K-ones are wonderful. They are very important opportunities for kids to sometimes have two years of continuity, but also for kids to develop and grow over time, and that's a really, really lovely option for any district to offer a family. So we certainly see it as a very successful way for kids, to support kids in early literacy and that, so.
So this is a voluntary, this, I'm not using the United Airlines example.
Yeah, it's a possibility.
We can't, we can't have a dragon.
No, no, we don't mind.
I mean, not, I don't mean dragon, I mean, you know, we will, people will have to raise their hand for this.
Yeah, I mean, and if we didn't, if, if four students didn't raise their hand, then it just wouldn't be an option, and...
And if you have many, more than eight, we would have a lottery.
And what about, you're talking about siblings, you're talking about future siblings?
Future siblings.
Not current siblings.
Futures.
No, no, uh, yes.
Oh, that's interesting.
That's interesting, we haven't really talked about that.
For the youngest, for the youngest child.
Right.
Well, I don't know.
I don't get that shot.
Yes, I'm looking to the chart, well...
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it would all depend.
So it may be more directed to folks starting out in the district.
That is what we have been thinking. That is an interesting question. I mean, we were prepared to, we are prepared to say that future siblings would also, we'd want to keep the families together.
So it's a manageable number, so we can maybe see how that goes, you know?
I think it's a creative idea, thank you for coming forward.
Well, it's all...
I think it should, it should take credit.
As long as it goes well, Josh, otherwise blame Josh, he's leaving again.
Many, many years of that, to look at that, what's the statute of limitations?
It worked out nicely too, that the two schools are so close together anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really, we're lucky in that, I can't imagine that would be a long commute for most in the Hamlin district. Actually, nothing in Westwood is a long commute, but...
So, yeah, I mean, here's the thing, these, these enrollment numbers are getting extremely challenging. I mean, they, they really are. And so at, at some point, you know, you're going to, we're going to have to, with these types of solutions, you know, long-term, Tony, you could potentially do what I would refer to as like a spot ring district thing, if you had, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to be able to manage to build things differently, it just, it's not working.
I mean, and we won't talk about that, but I was going to ask that, I know why sometimes do, what do you call buffer zones?
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't talk about that tonight, but I guess I would ask...
You could do it, yeah.
I guess I would, I mean, at some point, especially with the demographics of the next, I mean, the capital stuff is so far in the van, you know, I would love to, sometimes it's called buffer zone, I don't know, whatever.
So, it might be that certain swing, swing, swing street, yeah, you might have neighborhoods that say, depending on enrollment, you go here, depending on enrollment, you go there. Other towns do do that. What else on the other?
Oh, I have, I have another question, grade two at the Martha Jones, I got a call this week.
Yeah?
All right, so I'm being told that the numbers are actually twenty-four and twenty-four, Donna's right, it's all, you know, the answer.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke to her April sixth.
Well, Donna, she said she spoke to Donna yesterday, and Donna is going to...
Pass April sixth, perhaps something has changed.
So...
Well, so, yeah, I don't know today about that. Now, we can look into it, I, you know, I, yeah, I mean...
I think it's twenty-four.
Twenty-four, that's what I was told today.
I think we're currently at twenty-four.
We both have, Kurt and Tommy, we both have kids in that grade. Okay, but I think too, somebody moved into Martha Jones Street, somebody's buying a house up in their, theirs.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So we have to watch the...
They currently have an aid that goes between those two classes because of the needs of the children, plus the size of the classes. But they share, I don't know if that's very common or not, when you start to get it.
Well, that was an intervention we put in place because of that, yeah. That was one of the things we did.
Right, so if, well, yeah. We can look at that, I mean, so, yes, what we did when the next year's grade took, so current grade one, I think about this time last year, we talked about putting in general an IA in there as a support to the class sizes.
I see. Did you have, did you want to...
Yeah, I do have a question. Is, I'm Abraham, I'm in Miami, so is anything being done currently for the third grade class at Sheehan?
Twenty-four.
Just three, three, twenty-four, twenty-four, come on, it's here.
Well, what was told to me today was that Martha Jones has, I don't know if Sheehan does, right? She has, she has, yeah, well...
And we're not recommending, we, we, but the, the recommendation from us is that we, we would make the change based on these numbers.
Wasn't there...
Actually, twenty-four, twenty-four is actually at, at guideline. You know, long-term, I mean, I think we need to have a hard conversation about the guidelines. I mean, they've, they've worked, you know, for many, many years, sometimes they go up, sometimes they go down, but these numbers for an elementary public school are not, they're real, they're really strong across the board. And I'm not saying they're perfect, I'm just saying they're, they're really good.
Well, you have one last class in kindergarten at Sheehan, so what are you going to do with that, actually?
Well, I mean, it's, it's unallocated, I mean, I don't, it doesn't, I'm not going to spend just to spend, if that's what you're asking. I mean, if we, we would, if we have needs around the district, we would have unallocated money for that, just the way we have budgeted.
So for instance, once we get some direction from the committee about the possibilities that Hamlin, Deerfield, you know, if for instance, that didn't work out, we would have to go back and look at those Hamlin numbers of twenty-three and twenty-three, because that actually is outside of our K, our K guidelines. So I think that, you know, I would feel that that was a more pressing need to take a look at kindergarten size.
So is it fair to say that these are things that we're going to be watching on a continuous basis?
Yes.
And, and talking to the principals and the teachers to see what, you know, best thing is to do.
So let me just make sure I'm clear, so we think or we don't think that we should move forward with the voluntary, no, I don't need, I don't, I don't have to put this on the voter, I think, I mean, but I, I, I hear a blessing to go forward with that plan, try to execute that.
Good try.
We have to do something, I think it's a good point, yeah.
And then I would just ask, I don't, if, may I, I'd love to get, I know this is busy season of moving and moves out, you know, if we get more data, maybe it's June, before we go work, or some vacation, just love to update, you know, this is constantly changing, especially kindergarten, yeah, especially the kindergarten, you know?
Yeah, we, we...
You know, if you get a few moves in, it's totally, everything changes, right?
Yeah.
Oh, you think you can go away from the summit?
Okay, so we're going to move on to action items, both ratifying instructional assistance and bargaining agreement that I'm going to get, is that right?
Um, yes, so we completed our negotiations with the Instructional Assistance Association, and so I provided for you in your packet a summary of the changes. You can see that we're recommending in terms of polas for the, the salary steps to, to two over the next three years. And I would just say that a lot of the changes here mostly reflect just kind of clarifying or codifying what is already our practice, but there are things that have kind of caused confusion over the last couple of years, so we hope it would be good to write things down. So if you have any specific questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to accept this?
I'd make a motion to ratify the Instructional Assistance Collective bargaining agreement.
May I have a second? Second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Five of them, okay.
Can I just say it was a very collaborative bargaining experience, and both sat at the table and think, walked away, very committed, well, for the kids, it was very positive. Appreciate their, their work.
Could we thank the, the great...
I'd love to thank them.
One more letter to thank to put there.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so is approval of Adam's state overnight trip?
Yeah, so there was a proposal in your packet for an international trip to Spain in a year from now, April two thousand and eighteen. Details of the trip are in the memo, it was like another phenomenal opportunity and experience for our kids, and both Sean and I recommend...
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve that trip to Spain.
Okay, all, discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Nice to have five of them. Okay, approval of the minutes, we have two sets of minutes. One set was March sixteen. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
Discussion, I, I have some questions, look like good...
On, on the sixteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I wanted to change a couple of things in the, just passing down some word changes that I'd like to make. And looking at the page in the minutes, it says possible additions to the proposed budget. The thing I'm handing out, the two things I'd like to put in... The thing I'm handing out, the two things I'd like to put in, the second page is where I'd like to insert number one, and it basically says, right, the moment says to Tony, it says a concern with the IEP kids in the area of science and engineering. And what I'd like to add to that is, I said, the IEP kids in grades five and eight, in MCAAs, scores in science, technology, engineering, they're 48, 25% less than quote all students. That's the reason I was pushing that, and I'd like to have that added if I could to, where it says insert one, and where it says insert two, what I'd like to add in there is what, first of all, we were very fortunate that John gave us a budget with a set of questions about what we'd like to do, and then Emily and Abby went back and priced out what those things would be and what they would be, and that's, the third page is what I handed out. This is the fourth page, it's the memo to John from Abby and Emily, and in the first part of that is the description of what I had proposed, that I would like to see added to the budget, with the explanation, all of that, and I'd just like to have that put into the minutes, because that's what we were talking about, or what I was trying to talk about, why I would like to see that money added to the budget. So I'd like to see if possible the, to insert two, to explain what we're talking about there, and it wasn't just an idea out of the blue, it was really based on the recommendations, at least the comments that Emily and Abby gave to John on that particular item that I had asked for, and then if you go down, further down, where I say insert three, and that is the, again, the recommendations of the elementary science content, why, why the expectation, why we needed them, and that's what I was trying to speak to at that time, what we had received from the staff on, on that particular point, so I'd like to have that in the minutes as far as what was being talked about.
Wait, Charlie, I'm confused here, because it says corrections, insert one and insert four, what's insert two and insert three?
Insert two is, is the page that, if you go down, it says the, John, the memo to John.
Yeah.
Okay, see that? The first paragraph I'd like to have is insert two, that's what was being talked about.
Oh, I see, you want to make that, you want to take that paragraph?
I'd like to have that in the minutes, it says what was being talked about.
But we could just, we could, sure, I mean, it's easy, I think it's easy to do, you also just attach the memo to the minutes if you want to refer to that.
Either way, I just wanted to be sure, what we're talking about was, and then the other point was the, there's a top of the next page where I have insert four, says Mr. Donahue clarified that the middle school science specialist is not a priority, question mark, and what I have on this, the top sheet, is my question was, I asked whether the full-time middle school specialist curriculum here was a priority, I just asked that as a question, I didn't answer it. So those are just some minor suggestions I'd like to have to the minutes. I think that's a good idea, I think it's good because you don't want people misrepresenting their record months later, so it's a good idea to have. And just to add, the memo, John, would be fine too, you know, just to have it attached to the minutes to say this is what was being talked about, whatever is easier.
Whatever is easier, whatever is easier, well, we'll refer to the current certificate.
So shall we take a vote on accepting the minutes as amended by Mr. Donahue? All right, may I have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, so then we have a second set of minutes for March 22nd, and I just have one clarification in them, that you probably do have, does she have a minute?
I just gave her a copy.
Okay, so our word says that, let's see, I think I said that 105,000, that if we need it, we'll spend it, I was referring to the additional teacher, not to the science specialist. So I just want to make that clear. So it's for, yeah, so set in regards to the 105,000, that if we need it for an additional teacher, we will spend it. That wasn't referring to the science curriculum person. We were going to have the science curriculum, in other words, 50,000.
For an additional teacher for class size.
Sixty thousand, actually, for the, all right?
I just realized one correction too, the meeting, this is the technicality, the meeting was called order at 6:58, not 6:18, that's someone not going to be able to read my.
Okay. So may I have a motion to accept?
A motion to accept.
Discussion? All those in favor? Okay, new business is your end. Okay, public participation. Can we adjourn the meeting at 8:20? May I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you.